One minute. The power gather ready. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome to the January 11th Planning Commission Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. Please, Director Selman, please announce the meeting procedures.
Yes, thank you. When your name is called, please come to the podium. Address comments to Planning Commission and not to the audience. Any questions you ask will be answered once everyone who has signed up has had an opportunity to speak. Out of courtesy, unless it is your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts. This is a fact-finding hearing. There is no need to repeat that which has already been said. If a previous speaker states points that you came to make, you may simply acknowledge that so that the hearing may proceed. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers each will have three minutes, and we ask that you respect the time limit. And I'm going to take a extra point here. We have bad weather coming in tonight, and in the interest of everyone's safety, but without sacrificing anybody's due process or opportunity to express themselves, we would like to expedite this meeting so that all of you can get home safely. So, that's an unusual announcement for us to make, and I hope that we can make that happen. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'd like to have the invocation and the pledge. Commissioner Walker, release and the invocation. Commissioner Lamond, release and the pledge, please. Please join us.
Heavenly Father, as we gather today, we invite your presence into this meeting. Grant us wisdom and understanding as we discuss and make decisions. May your love and your joy fill our hearts, guide in our words and actions. Help us to be mindful of your will and to seek your guidance in all that we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Stotler, would you please call the roll?
Hobby? Sharma?
Present.
Erickson?
Present.
Stafford?
Present.
Kirky?
Present.
Lamond?
Present.
Davis?
Present.
Walker?
Here.
Val?
Present.
And Raiming?
Here.
Okay, now I'd like to get the approval of meetings from last meeting. May I have a motion and a second for approval of last month's meetings?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we approve the meetings. Next, we have approval of the agenda. May I have a motion second for approval of tonight's agenda?
Make a motion, we approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we approve the agenda. Okay, next, agenda is the new business. Ms. Selman, would you please introduce the item?
Thank you. The first item is RZ 23188 at approximately 155 Harvest Lane. This is a zone change application to amend the zoning map from C2 to C4 for property located at approximately 155 Harvest Lane. And I would note that Planning Commission's decision tonight is a recommendation to the Board of Directors. If approved, or if recommended for approval, this item will be heard at the January 16th Board of Directors' meeting, 6:00 PM in this room, and that will be the time of final decision on this item. Thank you.
Okay, a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. Motion second does not mean that you are necessarily in favor of an application. May I have a motion second to approve the item?
So moved.
All in favor? No, I don't need all in favor. Will the applicant please come forward and give us your name and address for the record?
Would you like a staff report?
Yes.
Okay. I would be happy to do that. The applicant is Mr. Ricardo Chambers with CESO Incorporated, representing the property owner, How Family Revocable Trust, requesting C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District zoning for 2.864 acres of land at 155 Harvest Lane. The subject property is currently zoned C2, General Business District, has a future land use plan map classification of linear commercial corridor, and is located in Board of Directors' District Number Five. The property is located directly behind and east of 3315 Central Avenue, which is the previous location of a harvest food grocery store. Multiple semi-trailers and other materials are currently being stored on the property. Harvest Lane intersects with the south side of the 100 block of Golf Links Road, right across from Oak Lawn. Surrounding property zoning is both C4 Regional Commercial Open Display and C2 General Business District. Adjacent and nearby land uses include Oak Lawn, racetrack and casino, shopping center, restaurant, retail, office, grocery, fitness center, convenience store with gas pumps, and automotive service repair. The Hot Springs Code, Section 16254, tells us that C4 district should be located at major arterial interchanges. It is also appropriate, according to the code, for business requiring large areas of open display, or that require a large amount of land for product storage and traffic maneuvering, and that would be consistent with what is being requested tonight. The application narrative asserts this request meets the required findings for compatibility with surrounding zoning and development. If rezoned to C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District, this property would be afforded the complete list of permitted and conditional uses as detailed in Hot Springs Code, Section 162152, Table of Permitted Uses. The Hot Springs Code requires that Planning Commission make specific findings with regard to requests for zone change. Those findings could be: the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development or zoning; that it is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code; that it implements an approved city plan; that it responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other condition; that it fulfills a demonstrated public need for land so zoned, or that it corrects an error in previous city action. The requested C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District zoning is consistent with adjacent properties to the north that are zoned C4. The subject property is surrounded by commercial zoning containing a variety of commercial land uses, and we have listed what those were. The information submitted with the traffic report is that, and has been reviewed by the city engineer, is that the traffic generated by the facility will be no more than the traffic that was generated by the previous use of the building. And also, that the city engineer notes that a large building used for a lot of employees will generate approximately the same traffic even though for two different operations. The second concept of the traffic memo is that traffic issues can be minimized by controlling arrival and departure times. The applicants and the study separate the types of traffic into three different driveway access points, with one strictly for employee vehicles, another for trucks, and the third for delivery vans. They've also established arrival times for the different types of vehicles in order to reduce those arriving and departing during peak traffic times. The city engineer notes that although this is a very busy section of Central Avenue, the traffic that will be generated by this proposal will not be more than the traffic from the previous use. The proximity to the traffic signal at Central and Crawford and the additional lane recently added to Golf Links Road will also help with the movement of traffic in this area. The recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and is consistent with the future land use plan map. That concludes the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Director Selman. Now, applicant, will you please come forward and give your name and address for the record, and please let us know if there's anything you would like to add, and you have five minutes, sir.
My name is Ricardo Chambers. I'm applicant, work for CESO Incorporated. Happy to be here tonight to be heard for the rezoning recommendation for the subject property. I don't have much to add, however, I have here the traffic consultant with me who prepared the traffic memo in the case if there were questions traffic-related, just in case.
Sir, would you like to speak? Name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Scavo with Lang and Engineering. I'm based out of Chicago, but have been involved in this project on the traffic side. And again, the staff report and the city engineer laid it out quite well. This was an existing use, an existing office building, and the projected traffic from this future use will be at or below that level that was when the, excuse me, when the previous land use was active.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anyone signed up?
Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. In that case, the public portion of the meeting is now closed. Commissioners, you have any questions?
No questions.
No questions, okay. I have a motion to approve with staff report findings and recommendations. Mr. Stotler, please call the roll to approve.
Sharma?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Kirky?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approve.
And Raiming?
Approve. Thank you, sir.
Okay, the-
Okay, next is number two item?
Yes, thank you. The second item is RZ 23196. An application to change from R2 zoning to C4 for two parcels located at 165 and approximately 163 Weston Road, one of which is split-zoned. Planning Commission in this case makes a recommendation to the Board of Directors. If that recommendation is approval, this item will be heard at the February 6th Board of Directors' meeting in this room at 6:00 o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address.
Would you like a staff report?
I'm sorry, I stepped on that again. Sorry.
We need a motion and second to get it to the floor.
Motion, second.
Okay, a motion to approve merely gets the matter to the floor for discussion. A motion second do not mean that you are necessarily in favor of the application. May I have a motion and second to approve the item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, please present the staff report.
Thank you very much. The applicant and property owner is Lloyd Robertson, requesting C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District zoning for approximately 1.064 acres of land at approximately 163 Weston Road. The subject property is currently zoned R2 Suburban Residential, has a future land use classification of residential low, and is located in Board of Directors' District Number Three. The application states that the existing use is undeveloped, and the proposed use would be commercial shop, which is an approved use, permitted use, under C4. Subject property is two unplatted lots. The lot along Martin Luther King Bypass on ramp exit EB, exit one EB is zoned C4 Commercial Open Display District, as well as R2 Suburban Residential. The back lot is zoned R2 Suburban Residential. The front lot currently has a commercial auto body shop, which is at 165 Weston. This request is to change zoning on both lots to C4, one of which is already a mixed zone, C4 R2, and the one which is R2 to C4. So everything there would become C4 if approved. The surrounding zoning is C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District, R2 Suburban Residential, and CTR Commercial Transitional. And to the west is unincorporated Garland County, which is not zoned. Surrounding land uses are the Martin Luther King Bypass exit to Albert Pike Road, also to the east, to the south is the railroad and a detail shop, and to the west, some commercial shops and Hot Springs Baptist Church. Hot Springs zoning code, Section 16211E1, states the required findings for a zone change, and that Planning Commission shall make a specific finding as to whether the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development or zoning, is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, implements an approved city plan, responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, or other condition, that it fulfills a public need for land so zoned, or that it corrects an error in previous city action. The applicant's statement is that all the surrounding tracts have commercial shops with offices. This proposed tract would blend in well with these commercial tracts, and is well-suited for the same purpose. The requested C4 zone district would eliminate the non-conforming status of the auto body shop on the split-zoned C4 and R2 lot. It is compatible with surrounding uses and zoning. And as required by Hot Springs Code, Planning Commission would be able to make the finding that there is compatibility with surrounding development and zoning. A future land use plan map designation of linear commercial corridor would give the subject property a consistent future land use classification, and would be consistent with surrounding C4 zoned properties. The applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommendation to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and corrects an existing use non-conformity. Recommendation to Planning Commission is that you recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and the change is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, and to amend the future land use plan map by designating the subject property Linear Commercial Corridor, consistent with surrounding commercial properties, future land use plan map designation. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, Ms. Robson, please come forward, give us your name and address. You have five minutes, if you'd like to add anything.
My name's Lloyd Robertson. Address is 135 Lura Place, 71913. Nothing really to add, except possibly that, for a lot of you guys might not remember, but that part of Weston Road is the old 88 that runs into the old highway for Albert Pike. So it's basically a dead end from the railroad track up to the commercial shop that's already there. So, the property that we propose to build another commercial building is right behind that shop, and it's right there on the end of that section of Weston Road, which is a dead end.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? Okay, thank you. Public portion of the meeting is now closed. Commissioners, you have any questions?
No questions.
No questions, okay.
I have a question. I am concerned and a little curious about the access to the current R2 lot. So if, are there going to be any changes made to how it's accessed after?
This action is only regarding zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I have a motion to approve with staff report findings and recommendations. Ms. Stotler, please call the roll to approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Kirky?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approve.
Sharma?
Approve.
And Raiming?
Approve. Okay, thank you, Ms. Robson, it's been approved.
Okay, we do need to have you at the Board of Directors' meeting on February 6th at 6:00 o'clock. They will make the final decision.
Okay, Director Selman, agenda item number three, please.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is preliminary subdivision 23173. This is a preliminary subdivision and development plan application for a 106 lot, single-family residential subdivision to be known as Cali Ridge. Planning Commission decision on a preliminary subdivision is final unless appealed to the Board of Directors within 30 days.
Okay, a motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion and second do not mean that you are necessarily in favor of an application. May I have a motion and second to approve the item?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you. Director Selman, please present the staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is Mr. Jonathan Hope with Hope Consulting, representing property owner Havens Development LLC. He is seeking preliminary subdivision plat and development plan approval to develop a 106 lot, single-family residential subdivision to be known as Cali Ridge Subdivision. This property is zoned R3 Low Density Residential District. It has a future land use plan map designation of residential medium high, and is located in Board of Directors' District Number Four. On June 3rd, 2014, this property was annexed into the city of Hot Springs and zoned R1 Rural Residential District at the time of annexation. The Board of Directors passed ordinance 6361 on January 5th, 2021, rezoning this property from R1 Rural Residential to R3 Low Density Residential District. So the plans before us tonight will be evaluated in light of that R3 zoning. So the plans before us tonight will be evaluated in light of that R3 zoning. This application seeks preliminary subdivision and development plat approval. Subdivision of land is the first step in the process of urban development. The property's zoning classification establishes standards, including but not limited to allowed uses, minimum lot sizing, and minimum building setback requirements. Subdivision regulations incorporate standards designed to ensure proper development of land for urban use. The arrangement of land parcels will determine to a large degree the conditions of health, safety, and economy that prevail in the urban setting. Subdivision regulations incorporate standards designed to ensure proper development of land for urban use. These standards include but are not limited to provisions for access, utilities, fire protection, and common elements and common facilities. Subdivision applications that comply with all city development code requirements must result in preliminary subdivision plat approval. The subject property is 25.34 acres on the east side of the 900 and 1,000 blocks of Birchwood Bay Road, is currently vacant and undeveloped and part of the old Carter's Dairy property. This application is to create 106 lots for single-family residential development. The preliminary plat and development plans detail how this is to be accomplished. The details include but are not limited to lot sizing, building setbacks, vehicular and emergency vehicle access, street improvements, utilities, fire hydrants, new street design and locations, sidewalks, phasing plan, drainage, infrastructure, topography, and detention for the development. All lots within this subdivision comply with the lot width, lot area, and building setback requirements for lots in the R3 zone district. Four new streets are proposed, providing required access to each lot in the subdivision. Birchwood Bay Road is classified as an arterial street with a planned right-of-way width of 70 feet according to the Hot Springs Code Section 151014.1 Street Classification Table. Right-of-way dedication is planned along this property's frontage to bring it into compliance with the Street Classification Table. Planned street improvements include street pavement widening, installation of a turn lane, installation of curb and gutter, and installation of sidewalks along this property's frontage with Birchwood Bay Road. No variances are sought for this project. The two proposed subdivision access points from Birchwood Bay Road are to be constructed simultaneously with phase one. This is a two-phase subdivision. A traffic study prepared by Hope Consulting Engineers and Surveyors was submitted and includes information related to existing traffic volumes, projected traffic volumes, AM and PM trip generation comparison, and proposed Birchwood Bay Road street improvements. City engineer Gary Carneyhan has reviewed the study and finds that the improvements proposed by this development are adequate to mitigate the impact they will create, and that as additional development of the Carter Dairy property may be proposed, we will continue to update the impacts and any needed improvements for those developments. The city is limited to requiring improvements that are proportionate to the scale of a particular development's impact. Hot Springs Code Section 16446 lists all submission requirements for preliminary plats and associated development plans. The preliminary plat and development plans, along with recommended conditions of approval, are complete for this project. Conditions of approval provide assurance that if construction is accomplished in accordance with all applicable technical codes and specifications, and if all criteria of that approval are met, the developer may apply for final plat and expect approval without delay. The finding of the staff report to Planning Commission is the preliminary plat and development plans for Cali Ridge subdivision are complete, and with the proposed conditions demonstrate compliance with both Hot Springs Code Section 16442 and 16446, and all individual elements All lots comply with minimum lot width, minimum lot area, and building setback requirements for lots located in the R3 zone. Right-of-way dedication is proposed along this property's Birchwood Bay Road frontage to bring it into compliance with the Street Classification Table found in Hot Springs Code Section 151014.1. Two points of vehicular access are proposed with Birchwood Bay Road, which complies with fire code access requirements. The submitted traffic study details how the improvements proposed by this development are adequate to mitigate the impact they will create. City water and sewer utilities are in the vicinity and are sufficient to be utilized by this subdivision. Recommendation to Planning Commission is for approval with nine conditions. To approve the preliminary plat and development plan for Cali Ridge subdivision as submitted with the following conditions because the supplemental demonstrates compliance with Hot Springs Code Section 16446 and the objectives of the zoning code are accomplished. Condition number one, all construction and construction activities are to be accomplished in strict accordance with the approved preliminary plat and development plans. These conditions of approval and all applicable technical codes and specifications, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, a final subdivision bill of assurance shall be provided to and approved by the Planning Department prior to execution of the subdivision final plat. A copy of the recorded bill of assurance shall be returned to the Planning Department after recordation. Number three, full and continuous compliance with all applicable stormwater permitting and water quality regulations. Number four, the planning director shall be authorized to sign the preliminary plat listing these conditions of approval in the development plan. Number five, no permits will be issued and the sale of lots shall not occur until a final plat meeting the requirements of Hot Springs Code Section 16444 has been approved by the planning director and filed for record with Garland County Circuit Clerk, and an original copy of the filed plat returned to the Planning Department office. Number six, approval of this preliminary plat and development plan is valid until January 11, 2026. Prior to this date, the developer may request in writing an extension of up to one year. Number seven, the developer shall document how stormwater runoff is to be routed through or around lot number 26. Number eight, Birchwood Bay Road street improvements shall be completed in accordance with the proposed development for Birchwood Bay Road section of the traffic study. These street improvements include but are not limited to the installation of an additional turning lane along this property's frontage with Birchwood Bay Road. And number nine, all utilities within this development must be underground, including electrical service. And that completes the presentation.
Thank you, Director Selman. Applicant, would you please come forward? Please give us your name and address for the record, list off if there's anything you'd like to add, and you have five minutes, sir.
My name is Jonathan Hope with Hope Consulting. I'm representing the developer, Havens Development. We're excited to be in Hot Springs doing these single-family lots. As you guys, I'm sure, are aware, we hear a lot about, you know, new lots in the Hot Springs are kind of hard to come by, so we're really excited about this project and bringing these potential for new construction to the city. As Ms. Selman mentioned, we're proposing this 106 lot development. We're not asking for any variances. We've fully complied with all the codes, utilities, stormwater, construction. We're dedicating the additional right-of-way to meet the street master plan. That'll give increased visibility, that'll give us the opportunity to build the sidewalk for pedestrians. It's really going to widen that out in this area to make it even better. As far as traffic's concerned, I mean, over the last eight years, the RDOT traffic numbers don't really, haven't really changed, they're not showing any growth. The numbers today are the same as they were eight years ago, and we provided the traffic study to show that this will not create a negative impact with these improvements to Birchwood.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the Commissioners when the time comes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else signed up to speak? Thank you. Wayne Bryan?
Yes.
Name and address, please, sir.
Certainly. My name is Wayne Bryan. I live at 117 Birchwood Bay Cove. This, first, I'll just say who we are as a subdivision. They're building on a hill, we're next to the lake. We are concerned about stormwater. We are concerned mostly about the number, we have no problem with the development of the area, but the number of houses could, means, it's 100 houses, 150 cars, all in this street. I understand there's going to be improvements, I'm not sure that that's enough of improvement. The center line turns, would help, the third, having a third level there, we would like to see four. But I've noticed that there are a number of things that they're going to have to change and comply to. Those sound like it would be made better. We simply have concerns.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Donna Kent? Name and address, please, ma'am. You have three minutes.
I'm Donna Kent. I live at 120 Oak Bend Loop, and it's a street that's off Birchwood Bay. And I have the same concerns that the previous gentleman had about traffic. And I hear that there has been a traffic study, but I don't hear the numbers that are suggested for how much traffic will be on the road. So that's a concern that I have. Is there a number that we know from the traffic study?
Questions will be answered following testimony.
Yeah, questions will be answered following testimonies.
Okay. That's the question, that's the question I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Smokey Campbell?
Name and address, please.
First time we've been here for this.
Yeah.
Hope everybody's doing well, Happy New Year to you. What concerns us is the number of homes going on acre land in an area that's been developed for years and years, except for the pasture at the Carter Dairy. It just changes the whole complexity of it. And I also have a concern about when they develop this, that the way that land runs from north to south with the ridges going east and west, there's going to be no outlets on the east side of the property, it'll all come out on Birchwood Bay. And Birchwood Bay right now is basically a racetrack to get to Lakeshore so they can get on the bypass, because Higgin Ferry is a cluster that you can see every day and every morning, just as central. It's just so crowded, and everybody has taken Twin Points down to Birchwood Bay and then go down to Lakeshore and go right back up to McLeod and get on the bypass. The traffic's getting bigger every day. I think this little development here, now there's a concern there also, this is only 25 acres, there's 37 other acres with this group that they can develop, so you're looking at another 150 houses that go on there. And, you know, you've got an area that's been developed for years and years and years, why do you want to stick this right in the middle of it? And take away from the people that are real close to it, from their values, I believe. And I don't like it, but, you know, that's, whatever you call it, that's the way it works sometimes. The drainage is a big problem, I think about. The water, it's got to come out of there, it's got to cross Birchwood Bay and go towards the lake. That's the low water, that's the low land, that's where it goes. And there's like three of those drains. I don't know if you'd call them wetlands or what, they come out of that property, they stop right there at the road. There's lakes backed up there behind them, I don't know, but there's concern, and most of that land is mushy back there between the ridges year-round. I talked to one of the guys who has a business out there, and he was telling me about it. I have not been there, walked in, but he says it's pretty rough. Let's see here, yeah, the other 37 acres, we worry about that. And also, the new apartments that are being built off of Higgin Ferry between there and Twin Points, it's 272. Now, where are those people going to go? They're going to leave Higgin Ferry and come to Twin Points and come down and down to Birchwood Bay. I mean, it's just, you can't believe the traffic that's going up there. I know the numbers don't say it, but this 25 acres will add about a thousand cars a day, is what our DOT has said, that I, the information I've got. So I just, you know, it's, the road, this right there, dangerous intersection. I mean, you've got three hills on Birchwood Bay from Lakeshore to Twin Points, they're up and down, and you come right over the top and there's a road coming out. It's gonna be a real disaster. So I wish y'all would think about this long and hard before we get it started. I think we could, I can do that. I don't mind the development, the DOT's thinking it'll be the normal, look like the neighborhood, not something different. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have signed up to speak. So the public portion of the meeting is now closed. Commissioners, you have any questions?
We do have a question regarding the traffic count, and I believe Mr. Hope.
Mr. Hope, can you give us that, please?
Drainage.
And the drainage.
Thank you. The, I heard two concerns really, or three concerns, stormwater, traffic, and soil conditions. As far as the stormwater is concerned, the Hot Springs stormwater regulations are very extensive. The pond that we will build on this serves to slow the water. So the way the regulations work is we cannot release the water any quicker than it's leaving this site now, it's the simplest way to describe it at least. So the pond will fill up and release this pond, release the water across Birchwood at the same rate or lower, it's actually lower post-development than it is right now. Their engineers, Gary, they're very careful to review our calculations, pond sizings, volume, all of that. So all of that has been reviewed, and at staff level anyway, been approved. With respect to the soil conditions, we've had geotech borings of the soil in this area, and it's extremely hard. There's concern over getting in the deep utilities without having to use heavier equipment than normal. So although the top might have a foot or so of soft soil in a few areas, underlying soil is extremely hard shale. With respect to the traffic numbers, I can go through those a little bit. The peak number, or the peak hours are really the most important, I think. So in the mornings when everybody's leaving for work, and then in the evenings when everybody's coming home, kind of, those peak hours is how it's most generally identified, you know, how is it doing in those two areas? So in the AM, in the peak hour, this development is expected to add 80 trips. 20 of those would be into the subdivision and 60 of those out. So during the peak hour during work, you know, 60 out, so about one a minute would be leaving during the work hour period, and then 20 in during that hour. In the PM, when everybody's coming home from work, you would expect... In the PM, when everybody's coming home from work, you would expect 67 in, so similar, about one a minute coming in during that peak hour, and 39 out. So, not a gigantic number. Obviously, it's comparable to any other 100-lot subdivision. And this is located on an arterial street in Hot Springs, which is described as moving major traffic from one side of the city to the other or to other cities. So, this is, I believe, your largest designation for a city street, and, you know, your long-term future land use, I believe, has this medium to high density. Our zoning is low density. So, I believe we fit the criteria. Our construction plans meet all your codes, and we didn't want to come in here and ask for anything above and beyond that, so we didn't ask for variances. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, just a quick question. The traffic numbers that you gave, is that for the completion of both phases after?
Correct, yes, sir. Absolutely, that's correct.
Okay.
I have a question on the traffic. The, did your traffic study take any account into the type of use of the homes there? I noticed your bill of assurance did not have any specific reference to short-term rentals, but whether that, whether and how that would affect the traffic if it comes to, you know, to a...
I think that's a good point. So, I think that the use of the home would affect that number. These will be single-family homes, lots and houses for sale, and the traffic numbers that we're projecting are based on single-family homes only, so.
So, you're saying no, their traffic is based on no rental?
Correct.
Properties in there, but you're not prohibiting short-term rentals?
These lots will be, yeah, I wouldn't have, we wouldn't have any sort of dealings with rentals. These are, I mean, this developer builds, develops lots, sells to builders who sell the houses, no rentals.
Okay.
He's never built a rental neighborhood, ever.
Okay.
And if I could expand upon that, the short-term rental licenses for residential zone districts are capped, and there are none available at this time.
At present. The cap can be changed. Again, it's maybe something you'd want to look into, because you can't, there's only one way to control that, and it's not for us to discuss here, but it is something that I know the whole area, we've heard in some other meetings, some concerns expressed throughout that whole area.
Gotcha.
Because of the attractiveness of the lake. The other issue on traffic that was mentioned is, is your westernmost entrance and exit, which is at the top of this map that's showing up here?
Right.
Is virtually at the top of that hill, which creates a blind exit, entrance and exit, depending on which way you're coming and going. You're going to add, you're going to add another lane. Would you address how that can help make that safer, which could be, could be a dangerous?
Right. So, I mean, typically, that's where we want to put the entry and exit points, is at the top of the hill. But widening that area, the additional right-of-way, the turn lane, just gives, gives more eyesight, more visibility, more options for the driver to be able to maneuver in a difficult situation. But, I mean, the entry-exit being at the top of the hill is, I would say, a good thing.
Yeah, well, it's, it may be blind over one side, it's hard to tell, just driving it, but, and I don't think if, maybe just for you to clarify, there was something mentioned about a center lane, but I don't think that's the way you've got this plan. You might clarify that.
Right. I think on the traffic study, you might be able to bring it up.
Right. Just explain it.
We're adding 12 feet of asphalt, which will give that, will give you three lanes there. So, you'll have the center lane that's available for turning, and then you'll have a north and south lane, if that answers your question.
Okay, okay, yeah.
That is kind of a rendering of what it looks like. So, between the yellow lines is going to be a turning lane, and then you'll have a full lane on each side of that as well.
Page 123. Yeah, I didn't see that. Yeah, it's so small, it's just hard to...
Do you have a traffic count that goes by this subdivision today?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So, 2,100 vehicles per day. In 2015, 2016, it was 2,100 a day, so it has not increased.
So, you're going to add about, say, hundreds, and you're going to increase it 5% or so?
Oh, yeah, I would think so.
Is that fair?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I think so.
Just a quick question. I'm pleased to see that your plan includes improvements to the road. I think that's important, but often it's a question of timing, when those improvements get made in the process of your development.
Good question, right. So, that'll be done in Phase 1. So, before we come back to you for final plat, that work will have been done.
Is that something that could be a condition before the final plat?
Well, it is a condition of the preliminary plat, and in order for the final plat to be approved, that work needs to either be complete or be bonded to assure completion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We definitely have that in our scope of work for Phase 1.
Okay.
Would there be a surety bond for the entire project?
There is a surety bond for work that is not complete at the time of final plat.
Okay. All right.
Thank you all.
One more question on drainage. There was something in the Engineers' Report about lake water drainage potentially on the lots 26 and 7, but I think you've clarified that there's no drainage back to that direction it all goes.
So, though, there was something like cross drainage across the back of those two lots, and I think the Engineers' Comment was he did not want that water to be incorporated into our development. We didn't want to bring that water, they didn't want to bring that water down the lot lines and enter our stormwater system, and I think on the last comment, we addressed that, I believe, to clarify that that water's going to be left just at the edge of the property, and we won't bring that onto our development.
Last question.
Yes.
Does this developer own any adjoining land there, or just this?
No, sir. He owns, so there is a sliver of land, I think it is a boat lift company to the north. On the other side of that, he also owns, I think it's 37 acres, at the corner of Lakeshore and Birchwood Bay. Thank you all.
Any more? Any more questions? Okay. I have a motion to approve the staff report findings and recommendations. Mr. Stoddard, please call the roll.
Stafford?
Approve.
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approve.
Sharma?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
And Raymond?
Approve.
Okay, thank you so much for being here tonight. We have a director's report. Ms. Selman?
Yes, thank you. It's a very brief report to let you know that we are on track to have the new zoning code ready for public review in mid-March. We are, we are on target with that, and so a couple months from now, we'll be in a whole new phase of fun review.
Okay.
So, you'll be spending some time taking a look at that, I think.
Will we have work sessions for that?
We may.
Okay, all right. We need to spend more time up here.
Yeah.
All right. Is that it?
That is it, yeah.
Okay, with no further business, I'd like to call for a motion, a second, to adjourn the January 11, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for being here.